Do we do the pledge to the flag first? Or do you want me to start with the budget?
No.
We can do the pledge.
We'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do you need me to do the roll call vote first? Okay. Member Steele?
Here.
Member Lion Welch? Absent. Member Grebberick? Absent. Member Lanford?
What?
Member Holbrook? Absent. Member Dean?
Here.
And member Lake?
Here.
All right. So we'll get started with the budget hearing. So I've used the same template that Terry has used in the past. So we're just gonna go through this briefly. Just got the list of the board members, the mission and vision statement, and then the key components of the budget, which are revenue expenditures and fund equity. So basically, this sheet is an in-depth explanation of what I have used to calculate the 2425 budget. So with that being said, there's lots of unpredictable factors that go into this budget. We really do not have a state aid budget yet. So we don't know for definite what our foundation allowance is gonna be. So at this point, it's kind of just a guessing game as to where we're gonna land. But what I have done for this budget is I have used $217 per pupil as an increase for the foundation allowance. That is the lowest of what they have projected. And the reason I went with the lowest is because right now there's a lot of things going on with the retirement system and what they're gonna do with the unimproved liability. So I thought it would be best to use the lowest estimate that they had projected. So I used $217 per pupil for the foundation for an increase, but I also accounted for a 20 per pupil decrease. So with that being said, the September count is 90%.
How did you figure the 20 less?
The 20 less? I looked back at averages on probably the last five years to see what our average per pupil loss was. And it's kind of hard to predict because there's been some fluctuations in how they were calculating, especially based on COVID. So I thought 20 would be a safe estimate. So hoping that it'll come in better. And then I have some graphs in the presentation of what our per pupil has done over the past few years. But I just basically tried to use an average of what we have lost.
All right. I mean, sometimes they use the birth rate.
Right. When you do the, oh, what is that called?
Mid-city's projections.
Mid-city's projections. Yes. Yes. So I used that, as well as we know that COVID money is pretty much dwindling down. So our S R 3 funds have to be spent by September 30th. So I used what we had remaining, what I had projected that we would have left of the S R 3 money in this budget as well. Federal revenues in the projection budget are just basically the estimates that they have provided us with for all of the federal title grants. So I'm just using their estimates. They'll come out with actuals later. And when I do a budget amendment, I'll increase those. The local revenue is budgeted based on historical information, as well as the taxable values that I have received from the county. And then for the expenditure assumptions for the 2425 budget, we plan to include step increases and then a 3% increase across the board. We also included a 20% increase on health insurance. We've been hearing all around the state that insurance rates are pretty much going through the roof. And we've been told multiple times by Mesa to expect a double-digit increase. So we've accounted for a 20% increase to our insurance costs for all staff. And then for natural gas and electricity, I've budgeted about a 5% increase over what we have this year, give or take some. We've had mild winter. Rates could go higher. Just kind of trying to account for that stuff in there. Then, as in staffing levels, they're pretty closely aligned with the 2324 year, except for we've added the addition of two teachers, one at Jefferson and one at Larson, basically to help reduce the class sizes in those two buildings. We still have a few positions that we have out there that are posted. They're unfilled, but I have left those positions at the levels they were at of the people who had left. So they're still accounted for in this budget projection. So going to the next slide. This is kind of the chart of what the fund equity has done since 2014. So we've just kind of steadily been going up. We had a little dip. And we have steadily been increasing the fund equity. Some of that is probably due to the COVID money, just because we've been able to use some of those funds in place of using general funds for normal expenses. So then, when you're looking at this slide, this is basically just kind of explaining how Proposal A changed the funding for schools in Michigan. So this gives you kind of a chart of what the per pupil allocation has done since 1415. So in looking at that, we've steadily increased, which is good news for us. So currently, for the 2324 year, we were at $9,608 per pupil for the 2324 school year. And then with the operating village, we can't go and ask for more money from the public with the operating village, because that's based on Proposal A. So that's already set. So basically, what that does is the state takes into account our taxable values, and then they give us the difference of what we don't receive in our taxes. And so they give us the difference in state aid to equate to what they call the foundation allowance. And so this next table is basically just giving you kind of a graph chart of the restricted revenues of the state and showing you, you know, large amounts of their funding comes from sales and use tax, and then your individual income tax. And then our portion would be the state education tax piece. So... And then we have the student growth over the last 17 years. And as you can see here, if you look at the blended count, so the February count is current year. So that's only 10%. And then the September count is 90%. And then they blend that, so that equates to the blended count. So when you look at the blended count in 2007, 2008, we've lost quite a few pupils all the way down to 2324. We've had some upticks, just a few, but not many to keep up with where we were 17 years ago. And then, this is just the bar chart showing where we were at. We're kind of looking like we're leveling back off with where we were in 1415. So we're getting kind of close to where we were. And then this chart just basically shows you how the foundation allowance is calculated, kind of like what I just explained a couple minutes ago, where the state takes our taxable values into account. And then whatever we don't get in our taxes, then we get from the state to come up with the per pupil funding of the $9,608. So again, this is just explaining some of the per pupil foundation allowances and the non-homestead 18 mills. And then what the state contributes equates to the foundation allowance. So again, it's basically taking into account the 90% and the 10%.
Michelle?
Yep.
Sorry. How was our kindergarten enrollment coming this year? Do we know?
I believe we are up. The last I heard, we were up for kindergarten enrollment. So... These are just gonna be definitions of basic categories in the budget, because you'll see in the budget slides towards the end, each of the categories are named these names. And this just basically tells you what is included in those categories. And that's the second page of that. So then we'll move into the final amended budget. So this year's budget, basically, we had a slight decrease in local revenue. And then, of course, at the end of the year, we're always matching up expenses to revenues with our grant sources, because you have to equate to zero when you're talking about grants. So you have to decrease your expenses to equate to the revenue that you've received. So that's a lot of the shifting. But as you can see, there's just slight differences in what the amended amount was. So the revenues for the final year end are $39,996.49, which is a decrease of $1,616,745. So then on the expenditure side of things, again, we had to reduce due to grants and making sure everything equates. The other piece of that is that you have some expenditures that are not necessarily gonna happen in this fiscal year. We had planned on a special ed bus being delivered this year. That didn't happen. So we're moving that into next fiscal year. So that is included in the 2425 budget. So that helped to reduce down some of those expenses as well. You'll notice in the outgoing transfers and other finances, that number has gotten quite large since the original budget. But that was due to basically having the larger boiler project and lighting projects, and those all came out of general fund. So in ending, the projected fund balance is $8,698,164, which equates to 21.5%. We leave contingencies in this budget just for unexpected expenses that will come in by June 30th. Plus, with having summer school going on, we're still trying to cover some of those expenses. And so we won't know, you know, actual numbers until June 30th hits and we get all the payrolls run. So that is pretty much it on the general fund budget for this year. Then on the preschool budget, basically, this is just kind of showing what we have received so far this year in revenues. We only had to transfer $65,000 this year from general fund to cover the expenditures of the Kids Club program. We've had some changes in the program. We increased the rates this year. We're looking to probably increase the rates again next year, just based on where the budget is going to land us. So the expenditures increased slightly for them in this program as well. And so the expenditures are $343,252, which is an increase of about $18,000. So the projected fund balance at the end of this year is $583. And again, that just depends on, you know, hours of daycare. It's pretty fluid, I guess you could say, because you just don't know. You don't know if kids are gonna be there full-time or what's gonna happen with that. So then we have the food service budget. So the food service budget for this year, we had revenues of $2,548,790. A lot of the revenues for food service are coming in from the federal government because of reimbursement for meals and that type of thing. We've received several grants as well through the food service program to help support breakfast and then also to get new equipment and that kind of stuff. So there were slight increases. But again, it's mainly federal revenues coming in there. And then on the expenditure side of things, that was $2,620,610, which is an increase of $208,041. So we're showing that we're gonna dip into fund equity by about $71,820, which will leave us with a projected fund equity of $730,048, which the fund has plenty of monies to sustain that cost. So then with the debt service fund, so basically, this is just our debt service paying back the bond. And you'll notice on this one, we are fully covered in paying back the bond payments. So this is basically taxes coming in, and our payments going out of this fund. So the budgeted incoming transfer that you see there of $500,000 is for the QZAB bond, which was a 10-year loan bond. And that will be paid off in 2027. So we have a few more years left to pay on that. So with that being said, the projected fund balance in that account is $4,851,351. So with that, then we have the sinking fund budget for this year. Again, mainly just taxable values and expenses going out of it, different projects coming out of it. So this year, we paid for half of the boiler project at the high school out of the sinking fund. So... And the other piece of that, we had some money down towards the bottom. You'll see $55,067 going out of a sinking fund. That was closing out the old sinking fund. And that was moving that also to apply to the QZAB payment. So in the sinking fund, we have a projected fund balance of $1,460,163 to be used on projects that we foresee upcoming in the next few years. And then lastly, this is the activity fund. This is a student activity fund. And this is really based on monies that come in from the students doing fundraisers or other activities in the building. And then obviously, you expect them to spend those funds down, their class funds, their athletic activity funds. So this fund is pretty fluid as well. So this projected fund balance is $347,732. Are there any questions on this year's budget?
Let's go from back to front. This activity fund, $347,000, that's a lot of money. Why are we doing that? What?
So basically, what those funds are used for, so you're talking about class, like at the high school level mainly. Like, the bulk of the money is at the high school level. So it's the class fund. So they're paying for prom. They're paying for all of those different types of things.
Yes.
At the elementary level, some of those are building activity fund accounts, where they're paying for like field trips and that type of stuff. So it's all student-activity-driven items, basically. So they're raising the money, and then it's being spent on their classes' items.
Is there a problem with having $347,000 in a fund balance?
No, because it's a student-activity fund. So it's not like you can use those funds in general fund. So as long as they're seeing that the money is... Because any time a class graduates, those funds go into the next class's fund if the other class doesn't determine that they have something or been short or something that they wanna purchase with those. So it's continual. And yes, I mean, you want the classes to spend down those funds, and you don't want them to build up. So yes, you definitely want to have them spending them down. But it's not like, I guess it's not like they're just savings account. I mean, I don't know how to explain it other than it just rolls from class to class.
So this is an accumulation link of all the classes?
Correct.
It's like all of the student activity.
All of the student activity.
So throw in Spanish club, throw in any club or organization. We can get you that whole list.
Right.
We can get you that.
I mean, it's athletics as well. So like all of the baseball, softball, football, all of the athletic activity funds are included in this budget.
All right. In the sinking fund, when do we take the money from the sinking fund to pay the QZAB?
So we can't pay the QZAB out of the new sinking fund money. You could pay it out of the old sinking fund. So the old sinking fund didn't have rules against doing that. This new sinking fund that they have just, when you guys got your sinking fund passed, your new one, there's different rules in place that will not allow you to do that. But the old sinking fund rules allowed you to.
Is there still a fund balance in the old one?
No. That was what that $55,000...
So the money for the QZAB is gonna come from the general fund?
Correct. Correct. So now all of it... So we split it last year when we paid the QZAB payment. We paid like $444,000 out of general fund. And then the remaining balance that was on the old sinking fund went to pay the rest of the QZAB.
When does that happen?
July 1st, every year.
The debt service fund, what's the interest rate on the bonds?
The interest rate on those... Ooh, I don't have that amount. But it's just the money that is sitting in there that we're paying back. But I don't have that information in front of me right now.
All right. And the food service fund, is there a way for us to get some of that money?
There absolutely is. And this year, I should have mentioned that when I was talking about the 2324 budget. So you can collect indirect cost from food service, which basically is anything that is not quantifiable. So I can't tie it directly to food service as an expense. For instance, we have people in this office that do a lot of different things for food service, as in doing their deposits or those kind of things. You can charge an indirect cost on those things. And the state will set a rate of indirect cost that you can use. So when you're calculating those things, you have to take all of your capital outlay expenses off from the food service expense. And then you can multiply it by that rate, and it will give you the dollar amount that you can take. I did that this year. And so the amount that we have always taken in the past was approximately $23,000. This year, I was able to show that we could take close to $51,000. The problem is, is you have to base it on actual expenses. So I facted it off to 45, just in case my expense estimation was a little high in food service. So that way, I'm close, and it's not gonna be an issue budgetarily-wise on either side of it. So I can take approximately $45,000 this year.
Can we charge the food service for heating the cafeteria? The several cafeterias? And cooling the several cafeterias?
There's no... Unless they're on a separate meter. So that's what is... That's another piece that the indirect costs will cover. Because you can't charge something that you can't directly quantify that is specific to their area. So that's why they say if you can charge indirect costs, charge indirect costs. Because otherwise, it has to be on a totally separate meter and be able to say this is directly related to food service.
All right. I think I lost my place before that. So on the preschool and daycare under the Kids Club, does that increase, is that like staffing or...?
So are you talking about the increase in expenses?
Yeah.
Yes. So what has happened, last year, the director left. And so we kind of went without... We didn't really go without a director. We had an interim. We still do have an interim. She's working on getting her certification. But so at that point, the director that was before her had benefits and that kind of stuff. So with the interim, she didn't get benefits until she qualified for benefits. So what is happening now is the daycare is open from 6:00 to 6:00. So finding people to cover those hours is beginning to become a challenge, because you don't have people that wanna work until 6 o'clock at night. So what we're running into is people are getting a lot of overtime, or you've got people that are now gonna qualify for benefits, which is what is happening in next year's budget, because these people are working longer days, and you don't have a choice but to offer them benefits, because they've met that threshold.
Sure.
So...
Well, you might get some consistency in employment too.
Correct. Yeah, they do have a lot of...
There's a benefit to it.
Right. They do have a lot of turnover there, unfortunately. So... All right. Is there more questions? So we'll go on to the 2425. I kind of briefly touched on this a little bit. So included in this budget, I have... I have, we already talked about on the revenue side, that I included a 20 per pupil decrease, a $217 per pupil increase in the foundation. And then I've adjusted federal grant numbers and taxable values on the expenditure side of things. Most of the staffing remained the same, with the exception of adding two new teachers. We've included a 20% increase on the health insurance. And then I included one new bus, one new regular ed bus, as well as the special ed bus that was supposed to come in this year that didn't come in. So I've got two buses in this year's budget. I've also included contingencies in this budget, just to make sure that we're covered in all categories. And then I've also increased the expenditure for the QZAB payment to the $500,000. That will be this year's payment. That will... The QZAB payment will increase in 2025 to $550,000, and it will remain $550,000 through 2027. So... And then it will be paid off in 2027. So the proposed fund balance in this year's budget is $8,120,078. That's a 20.8% fund equity. So that keeps us in line with not dropping below the 18% that is the board requirement. Hopefully, I'll have some better numbers in November that I can come back with a budget amendment, because this is kind of just a shot in the dark based on estimates that everybody has.
Big one being healthcare.
Healthcare and retirement. Those are the two big questions hanging out there right now. So you'll see on this preschool budget that I'm showing a large transfer from general fund up to $115,000 to cover this. In order to make this program last and make this program work, we're gonna work with Jesse on increasing rates. I have not included any increases at this time, because we need to figure out what we're gonna need to increase and look at the numbers. So again, my hope is by November, I'll have some better numbers. But I just think increasing the rates that we're charging for the daycare program is gonna be an every-year thing. We're just gonna have to with increasing cost of staff.
Michelle, do parents have the option of just going a number of hours, like five hours a week or 10 hours a week? Or is it...
We kind of, last year, when we restructured the rates, we kind of set like, if your hours are zero to this, this is your rate. Because having those people just a couple hours a day, then that kid is holding that whole spot for the day, which was creating a lot of issues. So we kind of did that. We may have to look at doing that differently again. I'm not sure. Maybe go into a flat rate? I don't know. I just don't know what that's gonna look like.
If the student does not attend, do they still pay? If they're absent, they still pay their normal weekly...
We implemented that this year. We said they were not in the past, but this year, we said they had to. If this was the... If this is what you agreed to when you came in, this is what you have to pay, because we have staff that are relying on that.
And all the other daycares, do you kind of do the same thing?
Correct. So we're working. We're working to try to hopefully have this budget come in better. And hopefully, we'll have some better numbers for you in November. But right now, we're showing a large transfer to be able to cover the costs and showing a projected fund equity of $4,000 at the end of that year.
I'm glad to see some movement towards more positive income, because it's a great program to just tweak it, right?
Right. And I think that's just it. You've just gotta figure out what is the right way to go. And then in the food service fund, again, this is pretty similar to this year's budget. You're basically relying mainly on federal reimbursement. So that's highly related to your student population and your reimbursement rates. And then obviously, we're gonna have some increases in staffing costs and food costs and those kind of things. So I've increased those slightly to account for what I think could happen. So again, we're showing that we're gonna dip into the fund equity of food service by $33,000, leaving the ending fund balance at $697,31. I run the general calculations. And I don't think that we're gonna have to have a spend-down plan this year as we have in the past. I think that we have been spending down funds like we need to. So it's three months of your average operating expenditures is all you're allowed to have in a fund equity. And I think we're good. So hopefully, we won't have to deal with that this year. And then again, the debt service fund is just taxable values and then showing the money coming in for the QZAB and basically doing the debt service payments. So again, it's all taxable values. And we're projecting to end of the year with $5,285,853, which will be fine moving forward to continue paying down debt. And then on sinking fund, again, is largely based on taxable values. So we're looking at also having about $2,599,161 in a fund balance. We don't have any current projects in the plans right now. But I'm sure as the year goes on, we will devise plans for what we need to do around the district and use some of these funds to cover that. And then lastly, this is again, this is... And then lastly, this is again, this is basically the exact same numbers as this year for the student activity funds, because you just don't know. You don't know what they're going to fundraise for. So that is in general, all of the budgets. Does anybody have any questions about next year's budget?
Yes.
I knew you would.
Several years ago, on a yearly basis, the state of Michigan would provide us with a fund balance, or a foundational allowance. And then, three or four months later, they would claw back most of it, or all of it, or even more than that. And when was the last time the state of Michigan did that to us?
I want to say, honestly, was it 2010, 9-10?
I think it was like, after that.
Was it after that?
I'm on the boards in 2010, I remember it occurring.
Okay.
So that's all.
2011.
It would have been pre-Snyder, though? I'm just trying to think governors, because I don't think Snyder ever, ever clawed back money.
I can't recall.
But before, before that was Granholm.
Well, and I think now, a lot of it happens through the retirement money, because again, they, they haven't landed where they're going to be with the retirement rate. They're saying the unaccrued liability has been paid down, and so they're trying to reduce that amount. But the problem with doing that is right now, they're giving us the money to cover that, so if they reduce that rate, what are they going to do with that excess money that they plan giving us? And so we're trying to, they're trying to come to some agreement as to either leave the rate the same and continue giving us that money, or figure somewhere else out in the school budget that you can put that money. So that's kind of what they're going back and forth on right now. So.
So my question is, does anybody expect that the state of Michigan is going to claw back some of this money?
Unless they do it through the retirement funds, I don't, I don't see that happening.
There's been no, there's been no speculation of that, especially since it's an election year.
Right.
That's right.
This is the highest it's been in ten years.
Right.
Ten years. And before that, 7,000 was around for like, seven years. They didn't do anything. And then when they, like you said, when they gave us money, then they changed their mind and took it back.
Right.
So, I mean, we're looking good now.
Right. The other thing I forgot to mention is with the sinking fund, we did have a heavily rollback. So we were collecting .9955, and this upcoming year, it will be point, oh, wait, it was .9646, sorry. So it will be reduced back to .9603. So that's due to taxable values increasing faster than inflation. So our general fund is okay with the 18 mils, but the sinking fund is going to take a little bit of a hit on that. So I did account for that in the revenue piece of the sinking fund budget.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to come in late. It's okay!
I just thought everybody was having conversations, that was very funny, hey guys!
Maybe I missed an email or something.
I'm also.
Yeah. I, I did, and a heads up, do you know if Todd is going to want this?
I have no idea.
So he's right there.
Do you want this laptop?
Well, yeah, I think I got it on the pendrive, so I don't know.
Okay.
Heard most of it.
I can give it a whirl.
It's all right. I have four of them.
What's that?
Sorry, half that.
I think you're going to get a guy here around the same time.
Let's see if this one.
Hey, it's all right. Thank you.
Heather's one of the kids.
Oh, thank you.
Find out what refugee schools.
We haven't sent a pledge yet, so I, I was just informed we have sent a pledge, so I can wait. Watch the hubble over there.
Oh, I'm a hubble.
And then on the BQ, we're investigating that, I'm not sure what went on there.
Oh, I brought a page.
We did the pledge before the, before the budget, yeah.
I imagine it's not going to do some roll call.
Right.
Yeah, for the, yeah.
I always like to.
Well, if that goes, I'm sorry, everybody, I didn't, I must have missed something somewhere.
Where's that page that we're talking about?
Okay.
Three and four.
Three and four? Yeah, so right here, Larson, and this was the biggest one that I noticed, but we're investigating, we're talking to them to try to figure it out. Gary, congratulations.
We haven't even-
Brian, congratulations.
They've not been approved.
Well, I'm going to say yes.
Spoiler alert, it's all over the place.
I was just crossing it here.
No, we're going to do it because of all these, all these real people.
I don't have any skills, so there's a change in time.
We're going to have a roll call.
All right. Member Steele?
Here.
Member Lynn Welsh?
Here.
Member Frederick?
Here.
Member Lanford?
Right.
Member Holbrook?
Still here.
Member Dean? There she is!
Perhaps.
Member Lee?
Here.
All right, the first thing, I'd like to apologize for missing graduation, and I would like to thank Dr. Lanford for filling in and providing leadership at that particular function.
I picked a hell of a day to quit sniffing glue off.
And you look professional, which rarely happens here in this room.
I was going to wear my derby suit.
All right. So Mr. Farmer, you're up.
All right. Well, hey, thanks for, thanks for having me. Just kind of a recap of everything that I, I put in that program for you guys. So, let's see if I can get this right. So, you know, one of the big things I think that, I, I'm always real proud of is just the number of participants that we have in athletics. I'm not going to read these numbers for you, because you see them in, in the, but with boys and girls at the high school, we have 353 total kids that are participating in athletics. So that represents about 40% of our, of our population. One of the things that I get asked all the time is numbers, why are, why is our participation numbers low, and why are we in Class A with, with the numbers that we have? So if you take a look, it really, Class A in basketball and in volleyball. And for basketball, 833 kids or above is considered Class A. And what the MHSA tries to do is they divide it into four equal, number-wise, for each division. So what you will see is the Poske and Cadillac, they have 834 kids, and East Kentwood, which is the largest school district in Michigan, has 2,838. So I mean, that, that's a huge discrepancy. So when it comes to us, which is what I care about, and the same thing with, you can see in volleyball, 830 they consider Class A. So we've got, next year, we're going to have 900 kids in our high school. And so now we are competing against schools that have three times as many students as what we do. So what the state is starting to look at, when I say the state, the MHSAs, what they're starting to look at is maybe go to five divisions. Because again, 800 or 900 kids compared to 283. So if you want to play, I'll just use East Kentwood, because I have it on there, if you wanted to play basketball for East Kentwood, that's all you do. Whereas here, we try and have as many kids play as many sports as possible, and you can see that from the, from the earlier slide, how many kids that we have that are multiple sport athletes. So next year, again, we've got 900 kids for the 24-25 school year, and currently, we've got 30% of our population is Arabic. I know that's not a shock to, to a lot of you, so, but that roughly comes out to about 270 kids. Well, and we're basically almost 50-50, boys to girls. And unfortunately, the girls cannot participate in any sports whatsoever. So what that does, you take 135 kids, and we would really have about 765 kids that can participate in athletics. So if we were to take that number, 765, and divide it by 900, it's about 46% of our population that participates in sports. So we get a real bang for the buck with everything that, that you guys help provide for, for the athletic department.
Todd, did you get a waiver for the 135?
Not at all. Because they're, they're eligible, they just choose not to.
It's a religious thing, isn't it?
It is. It's, it's really based, yep, it's, it's based on their fathers, because in Dearborn, there's a lot of girls over there that participate. And we have some in the middle school, we had some in the past, but when they get to high school, they just haven't participated. I talked to, to Mr. Yule, and my suggestion to him was, we should really base it off of physicals turned down. I mean, your largest schools, like I showed you with East Kentwood, you're still going to have more kids, but when you start looking at other schools, I'll use Lumen Christie, who was in our conference, they've got roughly 300 kids, but they've got 95% participation rate. So they're competing with about the same number of kids as what we are, but yet, when you look at where they're ranked, they'll, they're in Division III or Division IV in some sports, or Division VII in football. So it's, you're kind of comparing apples to oranges a little bit. On with the pictures. So this past fall, boys won the conference championship in soccer. Our girls were the I-8 swim champions, so this was something new that we did this past year. We're not, in swimming, we don't necessarily have a conference. We are in the SMAC, officially in the SMAC, but we've got five schools in the I-8 that have swimming, and we just find the time to, to swim against them, and we bake, base our rankings off how we do in a dual meet. So there's no end of season meet for swimming, but the, the girls won it for this past year. Here are our fall athletic, excuse me, fall all-conference student athletes. And again, I think this is year six that we've done our Purple Game. And what we're going to do this year is I've got a meeting set up with, with two other folks, with the uncertainty of what's happening with the hospital, we are going to create a Purple Fund where we can manage that money ourselves. Because right now, we're sending it, used to send it to Coldwater, now we're sending it to Toledo. No idea what's happening to it. They've never shared what, what they do with it with us, so we want to be in more control of what are we doing with, with this money, and making sure that we take care of our people. Just some more pictures of the, of the fall. This past fall, two ladies that qualified for the swim and dive. Mr. Delaney had a great idea when he did this staff appreciation night, and so any varsity soccer player, someone that meant something to them, and that was a staff member at, at Coldwater, and it ranged all the way from elementary all the way up to, to the high school, and the high school staff got to wear their jersey, and some jerseys were pretty snug on, on some fellows. But, you know, it was a great night, and I'm, I'm glad he thought of it and, and went through with it. This past year, we also did something new. I know the, the principal over at Maxwell, Max Larson, pretty well, and her and I came up with this idea of, on Fridays, our fall sports teams would greet the little dudes and dudettes off the buses, getting them out of the car, welcoming into the building. And so this is just some of the kids, just shaking them, giving them high fives, and welcoming, making it a, a great day. We continue on with our poster signing for our volleyball team. This past winter, girls were conference champions in bowling. Our girls' basketball team, district champions. Charlotte was all-state in gymnastics again. These were our qualifiers for the swim and dive, most numbers that we've ever had for the boys' team. And here are our winter all-conference members. And here's our spring all-conference members. This past spring, Ellie Foley, I think, believe she took fourth again in the state, in the shot put. One of my most favorite nights of the year is the I-8 Scholar Athletes. Now, these are seniors that have earned a varsity letter in two of their, in two sports their senior year, and we just take the top 10 kids. And it's, it's a great night. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it, because my wife got an award for something else, so, but it, it's a wonderful night, and I can't remember where we're at next year, but trying to get it to our place. Continuing on with the stick it for a cure, this past year, when, when we were talking to all the players, the gymnasts, one of the girls said something, I thought, or the coach, you know, the seniors, hey, tell us something that you're going to remember. Excuse me, and, and the gymnast from the other side of the state said, I've been coming to this meet for all four years, this is my most favorite meet, I love coming to this thing. So just makes me feel good that not, not only we touch in people's lives here, but across the state, and it's such a great event. Here was our Hall of Fame. We inducted nine this past year. Probably bit off a little bit more than we could chew, but we got all nine of them in. I doubt we'll induct nine again. But again, another great night. And as you guys know, March is reading month, so we've got some, some kids that go over, they read to Max Larson. Again, I don't know who gets more out of this. I think the teachers love it, because the kids are actually quiet and listening to what the, the high school kids are reading. But the high school kids, it's, they just love giving back. And so this was the group that read at Max Larson. These guys were over at Jefferson. This past year, we went to the, first time ever, went to the Women's Sports Leadership. Lady in the middle is Kathy George, she was the Michigan State Volleyball head coach, and took four girls. When they came back, we sat down and kind of started to come up with a plan, what can we do, how can we incorporate this, what do we need to do to get this going here at, at school? And we're kind of in talks right now, trying to figure out how can we branch this off into the league as well, so we can get more leadership. We are going to be seeing everybody in the league more than anybody else, so let's try and work together with each other and solve problems before they even start on the field of competition. Last year, I talked to you about how we were going to start the Unified Sports Program, and we kicked it off this past year. Our first event was a, was a basketball game, and, you know, you hear this, someone might hear this all the time, curse of knowledge, and, you know, me just going to an athletic event, and just kind of, some of these kids have never been to an athletic event. They didn't know how to act, they didn't know what to say, they didn't know what to do. So our high school kids were teaching them, when do you cheer, what do you say, what do you do? It, it was phenomenal, and, and so what we want to do is, you know, think big, start small, to just start. So this past year, we just started. Here are some of the kids that made some of their signs. We also did a bowling trip, went, went over to Strive Zone. And this was the whole group. Now, these gentlemen and ladies did this on their own, I just gave them the opportunity to, it's called the Night to Shine, and this is held right downtown, right across the street from the high school, and this is a Tim Tebow Foundation. And I can tell you what Tim Tebow is, if you don't know, otherwise we can keep going. And what these guys do, it's, it's a, it's a prom for anybody with special needs, and at any age. So these four volunteered their time to go and just spend a couple hours with, with some of these special needs kids. It, it was a wonderful evening. This past spring, I got an email from a lady that was in a panic, because they were supposed to do track and field for their kids at Waldron over at Mendon, and Mendon canceled on them. And she sent me an email, said, hey, could we come to the track? And I said, absolutely, what a great time. So we brought out our Unified Sports Program. The Waldron kids had it all set up, they did the announcing talk, our kids just kind of helped them out a little bit, set up just a, a track, just for that they can race around. This was when they were doing their quarter lap. A lot of faces, a lot of smiles. Again, I, I'm not sure who gets more out of it. Here are two of our student athletes that are going to be competing at the next level. Coming up in September, for those that know, this is Kim Nichols. Kim is going to be inducted into the Michigan High School Coaches Association Hall of Fame for her work and everything that she's done with gymnastics. Former athletes competing at the next level. This is Olivia Foley. Olivia was Player of the Year, Co-Player of the Year in Division III Volleyball. Two-time national championship with her team, she's going to go back for one more year. And this is Dylan Taggart. Dylan qualified for the Olympic Trials, which was, he competed this, what is today? Monday, competed on Saturday. Fortunately, if he would have thrown what he normally throws, he would have placed ninth, would have got him into the finals, but he finished 15th. He finished third at the national championships, he's got one more year to go at South Carolina, and he could get one more with his, with the COVID year. Please make sure you follow us, and always thank you for your support. What questions might somebody have?
That was pretty thorough.
Bob, I got, you asked me a question last year, why do we have more away events than home events? And I, I don't, this has been bugging me all year, because I don't know if I answered it. So if you take a look sometimes, in, in the fall, if we have three volleyball teams, and all three are going away, well, that means we don't have a home event. So those things, and then same thing when springtime rolls around, sometimes we have two. Um, he finished third at the national championships. He's got one more year, uh, to go at South Carolina. And he could get one more with his, uh, with the COVID year. Please make sure you follow us and always thank you for your support. What questions might somebody have?
That was pretty thorough.
Bob, I got, you asked me a question last year, why do we have more away events than home events? And I, I don't, it's been bugging me all year, cause I don't know if I answered it. So if you take a look sometimes i- in the fall, if we have three volleyball teams and all three are going away, well, that means we don't have a home event. So those things, and then same thing when springtime rolls around. Sometimes we have two, basically JV, JV varsity, baseball, softball, they might be away, so we don't have a home event. So that's why they, but what we try and do is make sure all league events, that we have ten home or twelve or whatever it is, we have even home and away. So I just wanna say that, it's been bugging me and I wanted to make sure I.
Thank you.
But again, thank you for all your support and, uh, looking forward to next year.
Thank you very much.
Very nice. Uh, next we have the request for public participation. Would anybody like to address the board? Thank God. Uh, the approval of the minutes from May twentieth. Is there a motion?
Tell me.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, agenda additions and deletions. The only addition is the Todd Farmer presentation, I think.
Which I heard was awesome. Or going to be awesome.
We were. You should've been where we were. Anyhow, there's nothing else, right?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda, communications? Personnel recommendations. Mr. Flynn?
A pretty good list. So under personnel, uh, recommendations, be it resolved that relative to certified staff recommendations, the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Ray Henderson for the full-time second grade teaching position at Jefferson Elementary effective the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Miranda Dominique for the first grade teaching position at Max Larson Elementary effective twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to hire Megan Collins for the kindergarten teaching position at Max Larson Elementary effective the twenty-four, twenty-five school year pending background check. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to hire Gary Dancer for the position of Director of Curriculum and Instruction in state and federal programs effective July one. Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Brian Shirck for the Assistant Principal Position at Coldwater High School effective August one. Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Kayla Sellers, English teacher at Coldwater High School effective August thirty-one. Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of McKenna Arbel, kindergarten teacher at Max Larson Elementary effective August thirty-one. Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to hire the following employees for curriculum chair positions effective the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Do I typically read all these?
That's too many.
Okay. Um, that are included in your agenda. Relative to support staff recommendations, the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Heather Scheidler for the full-time media clerk position at Lake Middle School effective the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to hire Amber Proxel and Brenda Woods as sub-bus drivers for Coldwater Community Schools effective immediately upon, upon board approval. The Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Aya Haujan from the part-time ELL support person, uh, position at Max Larson Elementary effective May thirty-one. Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Leo Armstrong from the part, uh, the part-time paraprofessional position at Max Larson Elementary effective immediately upon board approval. And the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendations for the following extra duty positions as outlined below. Mike Murphy, resignation of, uh, LMS tennis coach. Kayla Sellers, resignation of JV Boys and Girls Tennis Coach. And Mohammed Alman, uh, for the position of JV, JV Boys Soccer Coach.
Thank you. Uh, going back to these, uh, department chairs.
Yeah.
Are there any new ones or are they all the same as last year?
I believe they're all the same.
All right. Uh, next we have the approval and acceptance of gifts via Member Lion Watch.
Recently, the administration was made aware of the following gifts offered by the donors. Um, Coldwater Cardinal Boosters gave monetary funds to pay for the hotel rooms for the state meet for track team and new weight equipment. Value eleven thousand, seven hundred, thirty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. And that went to the track team in the CHS weight room. Coldwater Cardinal Boosters donated monetary funds to pay for hotel rooms for state finals for bowling, gymnastics and swim and dive teams in the amount of one thousand, six hundred, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents going to the bowling, gymnastics and swim and dive teams. The gracious and continued support of the donors is sincerely appreciated. We ask that the board accept the gifts noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. Be it resolved that the Board of Education gratefully accepts the gifts as presented and be it further resolved that a letter of appreciation on behalf of the board be sent to the donors indicated above for their worthwhile and generous gifts.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the approval of May accounts. Dr. Landford.
Be it resolved that the following accounts for May be approved for payment as follows. General fund accounts in the amount of two million, two thousand, seven hundred, forty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. And special revenue accounts in the amount of two hundred, fifty-one thousand, four hundred, ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. And be it resolved that the general fund financial statements be approved as presented.
Thank you very much. That's the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Support.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discussion items. Want to do it now?
If you'd like.
We've been in, uh, negotiations with the city of Coldwater over the, uh, cost, the expenses of the pool. And it's become, you know, onerous for the school district to continue to put out the amount of money that we're shelling out right now. And so we're taking steps to try to figure out how we can afford this pool and keep it open. And, uh, so we've had several conversations with the city, uh, over the last two months, four years.
Well, with me, two months.
And, uh, so we're in the process right now of brainstorming ways to get and increase revenue so that we can keep the pool open because it has become very expensive for us to take, keep it open. Uh, and there aren't that many people using it from our schools. I mean, we have the fourth and fifth grade goes over for a week, I think. Then we have the swim teams, the, the girls and boys swim teams. And, uh, other than that, we're not getting much benefit out of that pool.
Are we not having swim class as a part of gym class anymore? I know Diane, or Danielle Kelly used to teach swim a couple hours a day. The students not using it as a part of a class curriculum anymore?
If it is, it's only one small, um, one small section, maybe a couple weeks, but it's not like there's a whole class.
Years ago, it was fourth grade curriculum. How many years ago?
I know, middle school. My son took it like that. It was one of his classes for six weeks. Every day he went and did it. Is that not an offering at the schools anymore?
It, it, yeah. And I think that was one of Danielle's, since Danielle retired.
They retired women.
Yeah, so they, they, I think they go over and there's one class, I think they might go there for six weeks. I know J.C. Horman brings some high schoolers over there, but it's only for two weeks. So it, it's not, it's not an every day, all year type of a thing for, for the classes.
Bean's doing it.
Now, Bean did it last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, he did take classes over as well?
I don't know, but Bean, Bean did the swimming for middle school.
Now, I, I don't know whether any of the other board members have heard things from the community, but several times, uh, some of the older community members have mentioned to me, because I'm one of the older community members, that they can't go because there are no lifeguards.
Right.
And one of my concerns is that if we're providing this pool for the, the swim teams, that maybe the swim team should provide lifeguards so that we can keep the pool open. And so that's something that, uh, we're talking about right now. I think they have eight students right now in a class, but there probably isn't a better swimmer in Branch County than somebody who's on our, our boys and girls swim teams. And so I'd like to see them step up and maybe they would be getting their lifesaving, uh, and water safety instructor certification so that they can be lifeguards.
So the city is using the pool for their swim classes, correct? Their, their recreation part with, that they've always provided?
Well, they could, their community members can use it, but they only have about, do they have fifty memberships, I think?
I think it's around fifty.
From the city?
Right.
And the, and the, they charge a differential because the Coldwater Township never supported the pool.
No, they have now, though. My understanding of it is that, that last year they changed it. I talked to Buzz. And the township voted to give the township people the same deal that Coldwater was giving, Coldwater, City of Coldwater residents.
They, they talked about it, but I don't think it ever came to fruition.
And they're not giving us anything for it. So we're getting, we're in negotiations with township too.
Okay.
To see if they'll give us some money.
The city did not volunteer to give us more money either.
Pardon?
The city did not volunteer to give us more money either.
Well, that's under negotiation too.
Well, an issue I have with it, and it probably goes back to staffing, is the pool is open while the kids are in school. And then when the kids get out of school or it's the weekend and parents can take their kids, it's closed.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, the, every time I wanna take my kids, I call and it's closed. But if they're in school, it's wide open. Well, that's only good for the public. It's not good for the students at that point unless it's a class. But I'm sure that the reason that they're not open on the weekends is they can't even get people during the week, let alone on the weekend. But I think if it were open on the weekend, there'd be a lot more family action in there. Like more of the actual city people bringing their children to the pool.
What, what are other communities doing? Like Marshall's got a pool, Arbor Creek's got a pool.
Sturgis.
Sturgis has got a pool. I mean, they gotta, they have the same lifeguard situation and the same, do we know what they're doing?
So I reached out to a dozen different school districts in the area that were identified as having pools. And, uh, eight or nine of them got back to me. Um, they're all losing significant funding. The, the difference is, um, and what we find ourselves in a unique position is, um, if a school has a pool, it belongs to the school. Um, and, and so everything that is, everything that's associated with that is all one hundred percent run and operated and maintained by the school district. Where here, there's that agreement of, of some people getting a, a lower membership rate because they live in a particular area and that's what, that's what was agreed upon in the contract with, with the city. So everything right now is being put out on the table for review and see how we can all work together to increase membership, increase usage and increase revenue.
I didn't know until recently, um, that kids are supposed to have an ID card and they can get in and swim for three dollars. Otherwise, it's eight. I don't think any of the, the kids that I know didn't realize that there was, elementary kids, that there was a student ID card.
So, so advertising and, and community, um, awareness or community education has been part of this conversation as well.
And it's also been suggested to me that perhaps we don't have it open, although it's nice to have it open early for those older people or people who are used to swimming, like at six in the morning. Um, it's nice, but if, if that's a whole day and most of the activity is in the three o'clock and after, maybe we should change hours as much as, or have different times open.
Like have it open six to eleven and then four to
Yes.
eight.
Yeah.
Have it shut down during the day.
I, I think to your point, it's like you said, all about advertising and marketing. Like, I think if there's this much confusion here and having these conversations, what do you think the general public is like? Ah, they don't know whose pool it is. They don't know when it's open, when it's closed.
They just know it's not open when they need to go, because they don't have lifeguards and that's.
You know, and maybe it's something as simple as having some days where it's just a free day and people come use it and they go, oh, wow. You know, but, you know, having a couple like activity nights or whatever, like they used to have at the schools there.
Yeah, maybe stick a flyer in Friday folders about the pool schedule that might get home. And, you know, kid takes it home in their Friday folder, they're gonna
You know, here, he does free gym days every now and then, you know.
That's my experience as a mom.
So those are all great ideas.
And we've had conversations about, you know, going for a bond, you know, just to support the swimming pool. But, you know, the high school needs to be refurbished before we refurbish or take care of the pool, so. And we've had difficulty getting that bond passed. So there are a lot of things in the works, but I just think it's important for the community to know that we're struggling keeping this open. I mean, it's costing three hundred and some thousand a year for
Maybe.
Yeah.
And I think you gotta keep that in mind. It's not a three dollar kid walking in at the door that's gonna make the three hundred thousand up.
Right.
It's significant. We've always had a community pool here. The other one wasn't supportive either. You know, it's a splash park.
Well, originally it was supported, but it wasn't year-round. And it was paid for by the federal government, so we couldn't cover it.
And they closed it immediately when they built the new pool because it cost them so much money to keep that one running. So. Some of the other problems with that pool is that it's got geom- geothermal heat, which doesn't work very good for a pool. Uh, we thought it was the nuts at the time, but, so the city owns the pool. We own the maintenance. So that's where we are right now.
Do we pay for staffing too?
All operation and maintenance is, is on the district.
So I just wanted to bring that forward for a conversation so that the board is aware. And if you hear anything in particular, you know, maybe we can bring it back and talk about this again. But we are working on getting something accomplished, some resolution, so.
Is this the finance committee that's working with them or just members of the board?
The original group of board members were Dr. Landford and Dr. Holmberg and myself.
And myself.
And so we sort of continued that. So it's not a finance, but the last few meetings have just been Paul and I.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, there you were swimming.
They were at inconvenient times for the doctor and the banker.
The hospital has a pool too, right, that they use for therapy?
Yeah.
So that's kinda, 'cause I was thinking maybe that was another avenue of, you know, we reach out to the hospital.
We reached out. They, they declined an offer.
What about any of the, like, actual physical therapy places that are not associated with the hospital? There's that one over by, like, Goodwill or
The Athletico or whatever that is.
That's a great question.
If we could maybe incorporate something with them because especially with anybody who has joint issues. I mean, the, the low impact of swimming is usually a good recommendation.
Well, I think we did have some rehab place that was using our pool for a while, a year or two, but then they quit.
Marshall has that for their people that are in physical therapy for swimming. They have a
Yeah, when I was a lifeguard at the Y Center in Battle Creek, it was always that way too. Especially cause the floor came up and they could roll out the wheelchair patients and then they
Sounds like we call them lifeguard.
Yeah. I have so much time and I am ready to go to bed for eleven dollars an hour. Sign me up.
Evenings and weekends, that's what I'm hearing.
I know.
Evenings and weekends.
Yes. Well, at least then I can bring my kids to the pool, right? If that's the appropriate.
We'll give you a discount and rate for that.
Oh, that's so kind of you. Thank you so much.
Bring your ID card. They have their ID card.
Yeah, well, that's out. Just like those Z-Passes, it's long gone.
Uh, one of the things they did when they first opened the pool was they were having those birthday parties with the, the floaty
Running up upstairs.
That bouncy thing that they would put in the pool. But, so I asked Buzz, what's, what's the deal with that? And he said, well, we can't afford to do that anymore because it takes eight lifeguards
Yeah.
to staff that when we have that thing in the water.
Yeah, they probably don't have eight total, let alone that all can work out once. Yeah.
All right. So if you hear anything or you wanna bring anything up, please let us know, some of us.
Have you tried for the family yet?
Yes, we have. And there is some light at the end of the tunnel. But not, maybe not what we would like, you know, but yes. And because I'm certain they would not like to see it closed, you know? Um, we'll go to reports, presentations and recommendations, building reports, uh, curriculum and instruction update. Are there any additions? Mr. Dancer, are you still considered a principal or?
Right now, I'm in another rank.
Jack of all trades.
Cause you're the only principal here. And so I just thought, you have anything to add?
Live the dream.
Well, Brian's back there.
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, that's right. He's becoming a new vice assistant principal.
Absolutely.
If we, if we pass that.
You already voted.
Any board committee reports?
Yes, there was budget and finance committee meeting. So would, would you like?
We got an email.
Yeah. Would you like, if anybody has any questions regarding the?
Well, why don't we just go through what you talked about?
Do you wanna go through it or do you want me to go through?
I can. That's fine. Pardon, it was, most of it was the budget.
Yeah.
Had the budget amendments that Michelle just did, the proposed budget. We discussed CEA contract negotiations briefly, and I think there's some movement on that. The science curriculum digital subscription for physical science, we are adopting for the high school at a total of eleven thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents to support the new physical science books to go to board today for approval. Central office quote for painting, this is the outside of this building, which desperately needs a facelift. And that quote was twelve thousand eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
It's that power wash primer paint?
Mm-hmm.
If we're trying to sell this building, is that supposed to be, is that gonna be the inducement? Is that they have a brand new paint job?
No, what it is is we want people to come here when they sign up their kids. It looks horrible.
Nobody comes, nobody knows where this building is.
Unless they have to roll their kid and then they pull up and go, oh, Coldwater, okay.
So, yes, it'll be an improvement.
Let's do registrations somewhere else.
At the pool.
Lakewood's going.
Yeah, at the pool. That's what I think you did there.
We also discussed the CFO contract for Michelle to go to the board for approval too.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
No other committee reports, aren't there?
Correct.
Superintendent's report.
Uh, just to follow up on some things that have been in place, the security camera installation and upgrades are nearly complete. Max Larson should be done now. Reminder that Max Larson and Jefferson were complete new systems because they didn't have any Jefferson. The interior's complete with cameras. The wrong mounts were ordered for the exterior cameras, but all the wiring is done. And when the mounts get in, they'll, that will be a quick fix. And then middle and high school upgrades are going on right now to, to those systems. The gentleman who is running all of the wire and doing the cameras in the other buildings is also running the wiring for the vape detectors. And the detectors have been ordered, so we're hoping to have all of that installed before the beginning of the school year. Very optimistic about that. The boiler at the aquatic center's been installed. And trees on the north side of the high school property have been removed, as we've talked about throughout the year. And then last week, the administrative team attended a three-day conference on the high reliability schools framework. And you'll be hearing quite a bit about that over the next couple of months be, between Mr. Dancer and myself, how we're adopting this K-12 as a measurement framework to have that, have that same direction conversation that we've been talking about all year. To put everybody on the, on the same track, the same path, using the same vocabulary and same expectations. So we'll have on our first day, back with teachers, we'll have our, our big kickoff with a representative from the company that will do overviews and then breakouts with, with buildings over the next two days. But we're really hoping that this ties in, well, we're not hoping, we expect that this really ties in well with our strategic plan that we worked on this year. Any questions about the superintendent report?
All right.
Thank you.
Did you mention the new boiler?
I did.
Okay. Hundred thousand?
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve thousand.
Hundred and twelve.
Yeah, another expense. All right. We're gonna go to the action items. Next is the recommendation to amend and approve the 2023-2024 budgets. Board actions required on the 2023-24 budgets that have been amended by the administration. Revenues decreased by one million six hundred sixteen thousand. Expenditures decreased by two million and twelve thousand. Projected fund balance is twenty-one point six percent. And the other ones were discussed at the previous meeting over, over the budgets. And be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the amendments to the 2023-24 general fund budget, food service budget, the preschool and daycare tuition budget, debt service budget, sinking fund budget, and activity special revenue as presented. Is there a motion?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, though.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to adopt the 2024-25 budgets. Revenues, expected thirty-eight million four hundred thirty-four thousand. Expenditures, thirty million twelve thousand. Projected fund balance would be twenty point six percent. Food, preschool, debt service, sinking funds are similar. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopt the 2024-25 general fund, food service, preschool, daycare, debt fund, sinking fund, and activity special revenue fund as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yeah.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have board approval of the tax rate request prior to the regular board meeting of the Board of Education. A public hearing regarding the school district's 2024-25 budgets was held. A subject of that hearing was the property tax millage rate proposed to be levied to support the budget as presented. A copy of the Michigan Department of Treasury from L-4029 must be presented to and reviewed by the Board of Education during the budget hearing. The millage rates presented to the board tonight show that no change for this year to the operating millage, which would be eighteen mils, and the debt fund millage will be one point six mils for this year. We did, however, incur a headly rollback of our sinking fund millage reduced, reduced from point nine six four six to point nine six zero three. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the filing of the 2024 tax rate request, L-form, form L-4029 with the branch county clerk, equalization board, and the city and township clerks. And be it further resolved that the president and secretary of the Board of Education be authorized to sign the form, L-4029, on behalf of the Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yeah.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the three-year Coldwater Education Association contract for years 2024 to 25, 25 to 26, 26 to 27. The current CEA contract. By the way, did they pass?
I was, can I, can I comment on that? So four o'clock this afternoon, I got the text message that the contract was passed by the union as well as one of the two letters of agreement, the letter of agreement for an exploratory committee to look at the ten-minute time difference between elementary and secondary to see if something can be done about that, that time difference. So those two would be included in your, in your vote.
And there was one that didn't pass?
Correct. Yeah, there was a letter of agreement that, that didn't pass. That was about formation of a sick bank.
Oh, all right. If the CEA members vote to accept, which they did, this proposal, the administration, with request full board approval of the new CEA contract effective July first, 2024 through June thirtieth of 2027 during the regular board meeting, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the three-year Coldwater Education Association contract for the 2024-25, 25-26, 26-27 school years as presented. Pending the ratification of the CEA union, is there a motion?
So move. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the CFO employment contract on Thursday, June twentieth, 2024. The budget and finance committee meant to discuss the terms and conditions to the chief financial officer's employment contract for Rochelle Robey. The committee requests full board approval of the chief financial officer employment contract for Rochelle Robey from July first, 2024 through June thirtieth of 2026. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the terms of the chief financial officer employment contract for Rochelle Robey beginning July first, 2024 through June thirtieth of 2026 as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Support.
Any, any discussion? Roll call, though.
Member Lanford?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the superintendent employment contract at the regular meeting of the Board of Education held on March eighteenth, 2024. Superintendent Flynn's evaluation was accepted and approved with an effective rating consistent with contractual terms. Superintendent Flynn's current contract shall be extended one year beginning July first, 2024 through June thirtieth of 2027. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the superintendent employment contract for Paul Flynn beginning July first, 2024 through June thirtieth of 2027 as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yeah.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to grant pay increase to all individual contracts for the 2024-25 school year. The administration would like to grant a three percent increase to all maintenance, central office, and support staff and administrators. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves a three percent wage increase for the 2024-25 school year for the maintenance, central office, support staff, and administrators as presented. Is there a motion?
So move. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, though.
Member Lanford?
Yeah.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to adopt the 2024-25 Michigan High School Athletic Association Resolution. Annually, the Board of Education is asked to adopt the resolution as submitted by continued participation in the activities and statewide tournaments of the Michigan High School Athletic Association. There is no cost to the district for the membership. Be it resolved, the Coldwater Community Schools Board of Education adopts the 2024-25 membership resolution for the Michigan High School Athletic Association, which is the MHSAA, as submitted. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, though.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yeah.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the revised Leg Middle School Handbook for the 2024-25 school year. Leg Middle School Principal Jacob Kumar has updated the parent handbook for the 2024-25 school year and is requesting board approval of the revisions. A summary of the updated changes in exact language revisions has been submitted with a report for the board perusal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education formally approves the revisions to the Leg Middle School Parent Handbook for the 2024-25 school year as submitted. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Was that support?
It was.
I have a question. What is lunch detention? Does anybody know?
Um, instead of serving an after-school detention, the students get their lunch and then go to a supervised room. So they don't have the social impact of a regular lunch.
Pardon?
You've been there before.
Yeah, but they didn't call it then.
In school.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Recommendation to approve the digital subscription as part of the modification of the physical science curriculum at Coldwater High School. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the purchase of the digital subscription from McGraw-Hill in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents to be paid for out of the district's general fund as presented. Is there a motion?
Support.
Any discussion? We're also getting a bunch of free stuff too, right? Fourteen thousand dollars worth that kid that's being paid for by a grant or something?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a roll call, though.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yeah.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the utilizing school therapy dogs at Coldwater Schools. In early May, Superintendent Flynn met with Jefferson Elementary Social Worker Ashley Miller and the principal Riordan about the possibility of utilizing a therapy dog at Jefferson School. Coldwater Schools is currently the only district in this county that does not have a therapy dog. There is significant cost to the owner for the care and needs to the therapy dogs the district can help cover the cost to train the dog, which can be paid for out of grant funds, thirty-one AA or thirty-one N. Further, Annie Woolerman, school psychologist at Coldwater High School, has recently requested to begin the process of obtaining a therapy dog for Coldwater High School. The administration is seeking support and approval with the Board of Education. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves to utilize school therapy dogs as presented. Is there a motion?
So move. Support.
Any discussion?
Do we get, do the dogs get to come here for the board meetings?
If you'd like.
I think that, yeah, I need more support.
Because we need emotional support.
Yeah, emotional support for the board meeting.
I'm, I'm sure when they get, I'm sure when they, when they get trained and, and released to come to the schools, they'll be at that next board meeting.
Perfect.
So, I mean. And I thought that I was sufficient to provide.
That's a reason.
Just as cuddly.
I'm assuming there's.
Crash can have his ears.
Regulations or like, what you, this is a local company, Quincy Training. I mean, is there a certain criteria that needs to be met?
Yeah, this, this gentleman has trained all the dogs that are in the schools in, in, um, in this county. And he actually helps pick out the dogs and then pairs the dogs with the new owners. So it's not like I could just take in my thirteen-year-old dog and say, turn it. Yeah, so he's, he's been a part of the process for everything.
And are there like state criteria that need to be met or anything?
There, there is criteria. I'm not sure if it's set forth by the state, but there, there's training criteria, which there's some in your, in your packet about.
Right.
But if you have any other questions, any more specific questions, the trainer has actually even said that he would come and present to the board if, if we'd like.
Sure.
I think we need a vet to certify to help legally.
Well, they have, they have, that they have to have current vaccines and stuff. And Paul and I have discussed what they really need, so. But I think it's a great program.
Paul did, Paul did mention he was gonna see if we could get an attack dog. I did not. Maybe it was you, not me.
Get back to the criteria. I think Quincy, Quincy has two, right? And Bronson has one or?
Quincy has three and Bronson has two.
Oh.
Dance Fia has one too.
And, um.
We had, from Brownlee, the Bronson dog at a new club meeting. It was very impressive. Short of like, I am one of the guy's cookies. That dog didn't move. Pretty impressive.
That's a roll call, though.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yeah.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the quote from Premier Finishes for power washing, painting, and the exterior of the Administrative Service Center. Superintendent Flynn met with the Budget and Finance Committee on Thursday, June 20th, 2024 to discuss the need to paint the exterior of the Administrative Service Center. He presented a quote of $12,088.80. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the quote from Premier Finishes in the amount of $12,088.80 to power wash, paint the exterior of the Administrative Service Center as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
So I have to cross out this note, why are we doing this? Well, Dancer's here now, so. This is a roll call vote.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lion Welsh?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lanford?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes, motion passes.
We haven't decided yet, but it just got approved. Now we get to start to talk about it.
Is that gonna be a roll call vote?
Anybody have anything else? The next regular organizational meeting of the Coldwater Board of Education will take place on July 8th, 2024 at 6:00 in the evening at the Administrative Service Center. We're adjourned.